Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you rise and join with us as we honor America with our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Under regular business, we do need to amend the agenda. We have two personnel items that came up late, so we do need to make an amendment to the agenda. Can I get a motion to that effect? Carrie, a second. Phil, any discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Actually, can you tell us more?
Yes, one is a teacher who was inappropriately named or inappropriately classified when she joined the district. She was classified as a gen ed teacher when in fact she's a special ed teacher. And the second one is to approve the replacement for Bob Miller.
Thanks.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda? Jeremy, a second. Carla, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. We do welcome public comment. We would remind you that this is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the board at this time?
Hi, I'm not a good public speaker, so.
Don't worry.
My name is Pat Hockt, I'm with the Neighborhood Acting. My address is 688 Ontario Drive. I've been with the Neighborhood Acting Company for 11 years because of my son. We've been giving scholarships to students over the last 15 years totaling over $100,000. And I'm here to give each one of you guys a ticket to come see our show, All Shook Up, on November 20th, 21st, and/or 22nd. That's all I have.
We thank you for the tickets.
Thank you.
And you're doing very well. How did the play go last week?
Oh, we're going this weekend.
Oh, it's this weekend, okay.
It was Parents Weekend last weekend, so now it's this weekend.
Thank you.
Your public speaking session went very well. Nothing to be afraid of.
We were talking earlier about how many hits we've had on our website looking at board meetings. Would you like to know how many people might be viewing you?
No.
Do we have additional public comments?
Susan Brown, 75, 18, Nickherbacher Road. Regarding the signage issue, I appreciate that we are looking at getting the electronic signs and that it has been reduced from one, from two to one. I would hope that potentially we might be able to move the sign that you're missing over to the elementary property because I think the elementary property has been lacking in signage for a long time, and I think it would very much benefit people who maybe don't come down 350 but drive down Ridge Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak before the board? If not, next on our agenda is our student representative report. Our student representative tonight is Courtney Johnson. Courtney is a senior and is looking to attend RIT to study biology, technology. She plays the clarinet in the school band and is the section leader of the clarinet section. She's also a National Honor Society member and has helped out with a variety of school functions such as open house and the blood drive. Welcome, Courtney.
Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to thank you for having me here. So I'm going to review some events that have happened at the high school and/or are upcoming. So last week, some seniors, about 25 of us, went over to the Ontario Elementary School and discussed making positive choices and what it is to be drug-free and things of that nature for Red Ribbon Week. And musical auditions are this week for Legally Blonde, and that show will be held on March 11th through the 13th. And then we had a large number of freshmen that will be representing our band at Area Allstate. And we also have a large number of people from our chorus that will also be attending Allstate that is coming soon. Our German exchange students are finishing their last week here. They will actually be leaving tomorrow and traveling back to Germany. And then in February, the students that hosted here will be with their students that came and stayed with them. They will go there in February and spend two weeks, I believe, in Germany. Senior Ball is on next Friday, November 13th, and our National Honor Society induction will be next Tuesday, November 17th, and we'll add about 40 students to our Honor Society.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Board member comments, reports?
Girls' game, soccer game the other night, it was really refreshing to go to it and see how many, not just students, but staff and even administrators there. It was quite amazing on the support they had. I wish the results were a little bit better, but it doesn't take away what the girls accomplished this year. I mean, my hat's off to them, they had a great year.
Good, thank you. Other board members? Carrie?
I just wanted to let the community know that last Friday, I had the opportunity to go over Ontario Primary for their annual Grandparent Special Persons Day, and just wanted to extend to the teachers, the staff, the fire department for use of fireman's field for parking, transportation, and the PTO for all the hard work that they do put in to put on this event. I've heard we've had upwards of over 750 guests that went through the building that day. And it's a real special event where they have musical performances and the kids really just get to spend time with either a grandparent or someone who's special. So just thanking the elementary school and everybody who had a part in playing in that, so.
Okay. Any other board member comments? If not, then let's turn to the superintendent's report.
Great, great, great. So board, really great things happening in the district. A lot of wonderful things that we can report on, so you've heard already a couple of things. We had Grandparents Day, as Carrie was talking about, over 700 visitors to OP. Grandparents just came from all over. People traveled down from Ontario State. It was really a great event. And Dennis was talking about some of our athletes and some other really neat things going on. We have a couple of kids who were recently recognized in the local newspaper. We have eight kids total who recently took the AP exams and they have been basically identified as AP scholars. Two of our kids are identified as, qualified for AP scholars with distinction. Emily Blake, I want to say the right, Blakeman, and Catherine Moore. And then six students qualified for AP scholar awards for completing three or more AP exams with scores of three or higher. And these scholars are Carson Gressen, I want to say this the right way, Gressens, Michael Caston, Hunter LaRosa, Nathan Martin, Cody Pitcher, and Cameron Priest. And so very proud of the work that those students did. Great work. Several of them were actually in the local newspaper. And we also put information out on our Facebook, which is nice. We got about 3,500 hits on it, so just wanted to get the word out there to the public of the great work that kids are doing. So really, really great. And not only those students, but I recently, if you go on our website, one of the things that we've started is we've put together a Twitter page so you could follow some of the things that we're doing with kids each and every day. And this past week, I had the great opportunity to go and visit our students at their vocab programs over in Williamson and got to see kids from our district just really leading in terms of the outcomes that they are presenting and demonstrating in the program. Kids were just not only enjoying themselves, but you know, I talked with the kids about some of the projects that they were doing, and they can share with you not only how rigorous the work is that they're doing, but the relevance, how they see the relevancy, and the outcomes are just phenomenal. So really, really great work happening over at Williamson. And then also just in terms of our kids, we know our kids, they couldn't do some of the great things that they're doing without a great staff, right? So we have some really good staff, and just one I wanted to just highlight tonight, I've spoken with him and I just want to, most of you know, Dave Moran, who was, received a pretty big award about a week ago from Jim Kelly. It's the compere Coach of the Year Award for his great work that he's doing with kids as a coach here on behalf of Wayne. So we're just very proud of accomplishments and the highlights that are, things that are just happening that are really great in the district. Now, Phil, I know you know Dave, and I know you wanted to share a couple of things as well, if you want to. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, thanks. I just wanted to quick say about Dave and the awards that, in regards to the awards that he just got. It was a year ago now, I think, where we had offered up a trip down to Paris Island to staff and administrators to go down and take part in a week-long marine exercise, if you will. It was a workshop where they would put staff through a little bit of a marine-type training. And it's really, in typical marine fashion, it's a marketing piece. It's as much for the military as it is for the Marine Corps specifically. But Dave came back and did a presentation to the board, and it was fantastic. It was impactful, I would say, at very least. I think Carla can attest to that. But the, one of the objectives that he talked about was that they really wanted some of the coaches and the staff members that come down and take part in this workshop to go back and take the message that the military, the positives of the military, it's not all about war and that we see on TV. And Dave really, apparently, got the message loud and clear. He has a former student athlete that he coached who is at Paris Island right now. And he, after having been at Paris Island for a week, he kind of knows what he's going through. So Dave had wrote a letter to the student, and it's not so much the fact that the student responded to Dave, it's that the student sent a letter to his father. And he specifically talked about the influence that Dave had had as his coach and how much it meant that Dave actually wrote a letter to him while he was at boot camp. And the student said that he was, when he came home, he was definitely going to make it a point to go visit Coach Marine, and I kind of got a kick out of the fact that he said he wished he could strap his helmet on one more time. At my age, I reluctantly know the feeling. But I thought was kind of cool, in his letter to his father, he said, "Coach Marine never let anyone quit, and that's helping me here." And he said something the coach always said is the only easy day was yesterday. And the fact that he mentioned the letter and the influence that Dave had on him at Paris Island now, I thought was really, really cool. So I'm sure Dave was very deserving of those awards, and that was just something that popped across my radar screen today, so.
Right, very good. So we're very proud of Dave, and I know he's not here tonight, but I'm sure he'll see this. And so we're just really great, really good with the great work that he's been doing. I just want to let you know tonight, board, that we've also, on a separate note, in terms of some of the business items, we've begun our discussions with the WTA group. We have some negotiations, and we're looking at really, at this point, stipends and some of our extracurricular pieces, and so we are looking at that. Tim is a part of that team that's doing that with us. And so we'll continue to meet. Our next meeting, I believe, is around the 19th of November, and we've set three additional dates to kind of study where we're at in terms of coaching and stipends for extracurriculars, basically. In terms of our entry plan, things have been going very well. The last week has been spent with several groups of students. I have some more students I'll be meeting with next week. We're doing lunches with kids and just sitting down and talking with them. We have a parent meeting coming up November the 10th, if I remember correctly. We've put that already, I started to socialize that by email and also by Facebook, and we're looking for a lot of parents to come that night to sit down and just hear from them, you know, about the different questions that they have listed in the entry plan. So I'm just really trying to get information from them. Spent some great time also, as I said, over at the vocab programs and with some of our business leaders. I was recently with Optipro, the president from there, and it was, what was really nice was not only to see the number of clean jobs, as they call them, that are available, opportunities available for students, but these high-tech jobs that, you know, really are fantastic. But what was nice is, as I was going through the plant area, there were several Wayne graduates who were there, and they were sharing how many of the experiences that they had at high school truly prepared them for these high-tech jobs that, you know, that they're in now. And it was just really great to see them working and to hear from them about their Wayne experience. So really, really great. Things are going well. At our next board meeting, I will have for you, prior to that, I believe, I'll have for you a preliminary report with some of the things that I've learned about Wayne, and then shortly thereafter, we will do a full report in our first meeting in December so that you can know what I've learned, and I'll give you some recommendations at that time as well. And then in terms of student outcomes, I've shared with you a number of the things that are going on in terms of our AP, so our AP outcomes with kids, so we'll kind of move from there. Tonight, we have for you now a presentation around pathways to education. So I'm going to call Joe and Mike. The State Ed Department has recently put into place some new pathways for students, and these pathways are rigor. The design is really set to enable students to be able to really pursue learning experiences that they're interested in. And so I'll let Joe and Mike talk a little bit about those pathways, and once we're done, we'll take some questions. So we'll give them a couple, about at least 10, 15 minutes and then we'll talk a little bit.
Thank you. Yep, so tonight, Mike and I are here to talk to you a little bit about pathways. We're going to discuss a little of the purpose of pathways, who qualifies, and when it started, and then we're going to talk to you, talk you through some of the requirements of students choosing this alternate path to graduation. The purpose of pathways is to provide a different avenue for kids to graduation. It's, it allows them to pursue areas of interest, whether they're in the career field. You heard Dr. Calvin talk about his visit to Vopro and the experience our kids are getting there. Up until pathways, most kids went through the same, the same requirements to get to graduation. This allows kids to differentiate from the normal five Regents exams to a Regents diploma to a, to a degree. It's different, but it's, it's as rigorous, as you'll find out, as Mike and I share some of the requirements along each of the different five pathways. And what the hope is, is that with choice, as kids pursue topics of interest, we know that choice has a positive impact on motivation. And, and the hope is that it can help kids stay interested in school, work hard in school, and also prepare them for life after school, whether they are going to pursue college or career. They'll have some background and experience that'll give them a leg up and an experience to propel them into their, their areas of interest, as I said.
So as Joe said, basically, this is a new initiative from the state that they're really working to grab and cast a wide net, so grab more students, get them toward that completion rate of 100%, and then also really ensure that there's a lot of student success when it comes down to walking out of Wayne Central with a Regents diploma. This started last year, so for the first time, the 2011 cohort was eligible to graduate under the pathways. And at Wayne Central, we had five students who successfully completed the Regents diploma by taking that pathways avenue. Traditionally, you'll recall that our students typically would take an assessment, one in science, English, language arts, algebra, global, and US. That's still going to be on the table for students. That, that hasn't changed. And in many cases, with students at Wayne Central, there's a high likelihood, high probability that they could complete that pathway by the end of their sophomore year if they're on an accelerated track. Typically, for juniors, they'll get that ELA piece down in January. So we're excited about the opportunity, and we feel like going through the vetting process, by the end of the junior year, we should know and have an opportunity to identify which students would qualify under the pathway process. So the new pathway moving forward would still have the four core, one English, one science, one social studies, and one math, and then the students would be able to pick up an alternative in several of the following areas.
So it doesn't, what it doesn't do is it doesn't change the total course requirements. The state, the state's minimum requirement for course credit is 22, but you'll know here at Wayne, we have the requirement that students earn 24 credits, and that we have included tech, finance in the, in the requirement for graduation. In addition to the regulation approved, there's a little bit of a change to the social studies requirement. It's not a change to our practice because we've always had kids get two credits in global, but now that's actually required by the state. Where the state used to say, US, econ, government, and two other social studies, now the requirement says they will get two course credits in, in global. And there's a difference between course credits and exam credits. And so what we're talking to you more about tonight is, is those five Regents requirements substituting the fifth or the second social studies typically for, for a test in your area of interest. So those five pathways include the humanities, which are English, social studies, science, technology, engineering, and math pathway, the career and technical education pathway, the arts, and also foreign language, are the five areas that kids could pursue.
So simply put, for the humanities, it's going to be an additional English, language arts assessment that could come in the form of an AP exam, an IB exam, or a portion of the SAT. It's also a second assessment in social studies and fall under those same areas, AP, IB, or something else that state approved. As far as the STEM pathway, this one becomes one of the more challenging ones. As you'll recall, last year, we talked about adding that additional year of math, really trying to push for that fourth year of math. With the STEM pathway, the students actually have to take an additional assessment, but under a science pathway, they have to fulfill three exams, and under a math pathway, they're going to have to fulfill four exams. So that, that's really a change in rigor in terms of that particular pathway.
So the career and technical education or vocational education, as Dr. Calvin said, he was visiting our center, we have excellent, we have excellent opportunities in this area for our kids at our vocational program in Williamson. Truly, at this point, there are 14 state-approved exams, and they expect to continue to add to that list. Our career and technical education program is now offering four of those exams. So students would have to, if they're in the areas of agricultural, mechanics, accounting, and business fundamentals, and marketing fundamentals. So there's four areas now, and they expect, our vocational center expects to add those assessments as time goes on, and the state expects to add to the list of approved alternative assessments as time goes on. As you can see here, we're already up one in this area. The arts pathway, we have a lot of talented students. Mrs. Hockt was here and handed out some, some invitations for you to enjoy some of, and many of our, many of those that you will see at that performance will be Wayne Central grads. We know that, we know that our, our kids are talented in that way. The state is still working to add those alternative assessments. We expect it will include a portfolio piece to it, and we do have some advanced placement art classes and IB art classes, but at this point, they haven't approved those yet.
The bi-literacy pathway is a new one. That's a foreign language sequence. That one really is something where if a student fulfills their foreign language track and stays into it, again, similar to like an IB language class where they're going to stay in and take an examination, that would be a state-approved assessment. So here, you know, we have IB Spanish, we also have Abinicio for students. Those two would fall under that for students who want to fulfill that pathway requirement. You know, going back to the beginning, this isn't less rigorous, it's actually just providing students with another opportunity to be successful. So if they fail to meet the standard in one of the traditional five Regents assessments, but they accelerate in another area, there's more of a likelihood that they're going to succeed. As we started to say earlier, you know, our goal is 100% of our students walking across the stage with a diploma in hand. This really is going to provide that opportunity, and it'll really cater itself toward that individual plan, and that's something that we're really striving for, is that by the time students walk out their junior year, we've identified a few different options for them that they can pursue. And by January of their senior year, we really start ramping up our effort to make sure students are successful. So they take the assessments in the traditional January period, as Joe talked about, with the IB art in particular, there's a portfolio, and that assessment period usually begins, I want to say, in mid-March, where an examiner from IB will come in and start looking at students pathway, or, excuse me, portfolio. That pathway would be something they would pursue. With some of the other ones that are state-approved for IB, that Joe's going to talk about in a minute or two, that's something that we're a little apprehensive about because the IB assessments don't always come back to us, you know, by the time our June commencement hits. Our results are very good, and most of those students have fulfilled their Regents track requirement, but the IB results usually come back after commencement, and they get their IB diploma mailed to them after they leave Wayne.
Right. Most of those kids who go through the IB program have met the minimum five Regents requirements, they're not waiting on it. So the hesitation is for, for the kid whose graduation hinges on that exam, and that would be a long waiting period. So this isn't just for acceler, this is for all kids. And so students with disabilities, students with individualized education plans, they enjoy all of the rights and protections of their plan, whether they go a traditional route or they choose an alternate pathway. We, of course, would have it no other way. There are safety nets available for kids, low-pass options for kids, I won't get too much into that, but there are mechanisms for kids who just struggle on, on assessments to reach that 65, where in some combinations, they can score 55 to 64 on an exam, provided another exam is at or above that 65 level. So those, all those things that are currently in place for our students with disabilities continue to be in place for them. So basically, in, you know, just to sum it up, all the pathways are rigorous. Some are more relevant to certain groups of kids, some provide a more interest to certain group of kids, but no one pathway is easier or harder in rigor than another, except that when things are relevant, you do tend to be able to work, have that stamina to stick with it. The required assessments will vary depending on the pathway chosen, but course requirements essentially have gone unchanged. So whether, the big piece is in social studies. We have two Regents exams that are traditionally required, that's global, and that's US history. Well, traditionally, if a student's going to struggle, we know it's in global, you know, over, we have had kids take that global exam two, three, four times. It's not unusual for a kid if they're, if they're struggling to do that. Well, pathways would allow us to channel that energy if we, if, if they successfully meet the US exam, which we had 92% passing rate, so most of our kids do meet success with that, to focus in on an area of interest instead of continually trying to get, get through an exam that is just really struggling to do. So the, so the course requirements are unchanged, and also those Regents with advanced distinctions, whether you're a pathways student or you're a traditional pathway student, you have the opportunity to earn advanced with additional assessments in your areas of approved alternative tests. So I know that was quick, but we'd be happy to answer any questions from ahead. Carla?
Is this an option for kids who just don't want to come to school?
Not really. We need them here. So this, as we said before, think about the exams that are the alternate exams that are approved. Mike shared with you IB, AP, a significant score on an SAT in the component area. So it's, we need them here, and you know, we don't, one of the requirements when we look at sending a student to Vopro is attendance. If we have to chase you to this school, we know it's going to be hard to get you here and then to your vocational. So it's not...
I didn't know if it was for kids that could, like, speed up the graduation process, you know?
Well, we did actually have a pathway student, we... Well, we did actually have a pathway student, we, last year, that she was a junior technically, but she graduated a year early. But going back to what Joe started off with is our, our local requirement of twenty-four credits, she wouldn't have been eligible for that had she not met those twenty-four credits already. So she may have completed the five state-approved assessments, but she still needed to fulfill the twenty-four credit requirement for us. And she did that by attending summer school and going in and taking some of those courses ahead of time, thinking proactively so that she could start her college career a year early. But for the kids that missed, that, that's where that twenty-four credit comes into play to say, like Joe said, if, if you're not coming to school here, you're going to have a hard time being successful. The other part with the special ed population worth noting is we're very comfortable with some of our students remaining here until they're twenty-one. And so we may never hit the hundred percent target with all of our students crossing the stage at the same point in time. And, and that's okay with us, that's still our goal. But we're, we're very proud of that eighteen to twenty-one-year-old programs that we have here. And I know Mrs. Scheich's been looking at some alternatives there with trying to latch on to a college program for a particular age group of that nature. So we're, we're confident that the pathway is going to meet some students' needs, but the majority of our students are still going to fulfill the traditional track.
Just to kind of add to that, so the whole reason behind the Board of Regents really created some of these pathways was so that kids would get over the finish line. So we know by eleventh grade, twelfth grade, sometimes kids don't, you know, done ninth and tenth grade, but they just don't quite get over the finish line. And so sometimes if there is, going back to that rigor and relevance, if kids can see this is really relevant to me, like I really enjoy foreign language and, or I really enjoy career and tech programs, right? Sometimes it gets their interest in, in place, right? And so you can, sometimes the kids can buy in and, and once you get the buy-in, you get them over the finish line. And at the end of the day, they've had a very rigorous program, but they've also had that, that piece where they've really been involved in something that they really enjoy. So it's relevant to them. So hopefully, across the entire state, what we'll see is graduation rates go up. And yet, the rigor has not gone down. So kids are, but they're pursuing things that might be of better interest to them, whether it's STEM or foreign language or career tech, whatever it is, basically.
What will determine how soon other CTE exams are, are headed? Is that dependent upon both states, dependent upon the state, a combination?
It's, it's the state. I mean, there, I think they said they have forty approved programs that students are certificated in. But they're kind of wondering why the state went forward with that approach. And there are only four approved, you know, pathway exams right now.
So the state has kind of like the horse before the cart, so, so yeah, or the cart before the horse. So they, you know, they've got, they said, hey, listen, you can do vocab pieces, but we don't have the final commencement exam for the kid yet in place. So each year, little by little, you're getting more and more of those exams.
So perhaps that's something that four county could put in its legislating possession.
That might be good, that's great, that's great.
The, you said five students graduate, is that something that maybe helped those kids finish school because they were, had the interest?
It is. And, and I think the other part, when Joe speaks of the relevance, I mean, we've had several students take several regions exams multiple times and fall short. So we used to have, they could appeal to graduate with a score of a sixty-three or sixty-four. They weren't a special ed student, they didn't have a safety net. So they, they were taking that global assessment four and five times. Some of them have taken the algebra assessment six times. And, and so yes, there were a few students who, you know, pursued the pathway with the counselors working hand in hand with them. And it, it did make them successful.
So what was our graduation percent last year?
I want to say off the top of my head, somewhere between ninety-three and ninety-four point seven percent, somewhere in that range.
Chairman.
Um, I, I, I understand the global thing because that's what I work with my students. I had kids taking it nine times. And man, when the state changed that rule, that you didn't need both, it's like, I got two maths, now I don't need those two social studies. My question comes with the vocational, can they, if I'm recalling correctly, they can get credits for traditional exams through some of those classes as well? Or is it just, you mentioned agriculture and the business, but is there a way, if I'm taking whatever technology class where there's a lot of high skills math involved, can I get my region's exam in math through that instead of sitting through whatever math that would be here?
Any, so the, the idea behind the assessment requirement is it's what assessment does that core, what does that course lead to? So if the net, so if they're taking a course in vocational, in, in VOPRO and it ends in a, and it naturally ends in a regions exam, that absolutely, or one of the state-approved alternative assessments, then, then that's good, you can, you can count that.
You can get like, I think what you're talking about is embedded credits, embedded math or embedded science. Many of the vocab programs do have embedded math or science credits that you can receive. Some of them also have college credit that you can receive. So you're getting dual credits. So you, you, some of our programs, I saw one the other week, I believe it was the IT program, the student is, is getting, you know, it could be a science or math credit, but they're also getting a college credit too. So a kind of, yes, there are embedded credits in those, those court, in several of those vocab programs. Yes, you can get math or science and some of them may have an English component to it. So it's possible, very possible.
Then to piggyback on that, I would ask, how well are our guidance counselors and folks here relaying that information to the families? Because I know a lot of families, if you're not in education, a lot of people don't, they have no idea what the kids are required to do. So are we making that readily available to the families?
I, I would say yes, we are. I think that the misconception with the pathways is that we want to promote it early on. And that I would say would be short-sighted. I mean, we think, again, our approach at Wayne's still going to be high standards, you know, stick with the traditional pathway. But really start identifying those students as they've got a few regions under their belt. So by the end of their junior year, when parents have those sit-down conversations with the counselors, like the seniors are doing now, you know, they'll talk to them about where students are at. And from administrative staff, we sit down the second or third week in September and identify our seniors as our first population of at-risk students. And we start those conversations with parents that way, with the counselors having parent-teacher conferences, what students need to graduate, whether it's community service, whether it's their internship or whether they need a particular exam. And then every two weeks after that. And then in January, we start mailing certified letters home and following up and, and continue with those sit-down conversations. But again, that's pretty much our, our approach right now, that we're going to try and manage this thing as best we can with a traditional route, rather than advertise something early on and then have a student's interest change. And then all of a sudden say, oh, we've started you down this pathway and now we've pigeonholed you because you're a junior in high school and you're running out of options. And so the next two years, we're going to be scrambling to meet the necessary assessments. But I would say, yes, we are, we are doing a pretty good job of sitting down with families.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We have a culinary arts student in the back. I wish his exam was like making some brownies or something for us and bringing those in. Right, Jason, I was trying to squeeze him earlier for, on a pathway. I'd give him a sticker or something, but he's not buying it.
Jason, do you have a participation in government form that you need to have signed at some point? I believe it would be appropriate to bring some biscuits or something back.
It's just biscuits.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Jason, do you actually have, he has a form.
We'll sign it without the biscuits tonight. Thank you.
There you go, chicken and biscuit. All right, board, so we, we have a couple of things. So I've asked Greg to just kind of, in response to our last meeting request, you asked about would the vendor be able to provide, would they be able to do at least one sign? We did talk with the vendor, I'll let Greg talk a little bit about that. And then second of all, you asked about what might it cost to do an additional sign if you wanted to do it at the other site? So we brought that information back from you, for you. And then after sharing that information with you, we also wanted to give a little piece on the capital project update, just so you know where things are between Weller and, and Chase and, and the folks there, so you know a little bit about that. And then lastly, we just want to share around our budget calendar. Greg and I have been working very closely around the budget process and we'd like to, to share the calendar with you and begin the whole budget workshop piece and get us moving. So that way we are on the right path as we move forward for the year. So Greg, we'll let you go ahead.
Thank you. What you see up on the board there is a rendition of what the signs or sign would look at at either the high school or the middle school. One of the questions that the board asked at the last meeting when we had the discussion about the signs was, could we go with just one sign? I contacted them and they did get back to me and said they were willing to hold the price. So basically, they took the price and cut it in half. So really, it's still in line with what the bid is because if they were low, lowest responsible bidder for two signs are going to be low for one. I told them if they change their price at all, then really we'd have to start it from scratch because really then it's not fair, you're not giving everybody that same opportunity. Because if you let one change, you'd have to let others. So they did respond and say that they would hold the price if the decision was to do one sign at the high school. The second piece that was brought up at the end was the possibility of putting a sign at Ontario, the Ontario site for Ontario primary and elementary. And we talked to them about that and they came back with a price of thirty-four thousand five hundred. And that sign would be a little bit smaller. They're recommending a little bit smaller message board than what you see there. Those message boards were sized to fit the existing brick structure, which was already in place. This, so those are forty-four, high by one twenty-one. What they're recommending over there would be a thirty-six by ninety-six. But if we wanted it to go inside a structure similar to what you see there or something that would match the building, some kind of a brick structure, that would cost about five thousand dollars, which is included in the price that they quoted us of the thirty-four five. And then on top of that, Bob Miller estimates there'd be about a thirty-two hundred dollar cost for the boring, the directional boring to go underneath the sidewalks and the pavement to get to the, the place of the sign as well as to get electric out there. And I had some pictures that I shared with the superintendent. I did, I don't remember if, if, basically, what, and I could pass these around of what a smaller board would look like. There's also an option, if you didn't want the, the structure, the brick structure, to go with metal poles. That would reduce the price.
Greg.
Yes.
Where it says Wayne Central High School.
Yes.
Is that what we have now? That would be the top part, that would be new too?
Yes.
And then the sign would be where it's all yellow, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And is the Wayne Central High School on both sides?
Yes.
And the sign would be on both sides?
Correct. And Carolyn, you could either go with the eagle's head or the, the compass logo. So that rendition there shows you the choices of the two.
And you said the measurements again were?
The, the measurement of that one is forty-four high by one hundred and twenty-one long and it's five foot deep, double-spaced. And that one's sized to fit the brick column structure, which was in place, what, what is in place now?
Tall and a hundred and twenty?
Hundred and twenty-one.
So that's like ten feet?
Long, yep.
Ten feet?
Ten feet, one inch.
Yes.
It doesn't look like ten feet out there.
Right.
I know.
Yeah, that's the size. And typically, the, the, the typical boards that they install are actually smaller than these. Obviously, these were sized to fit the brick structures. So what you see there are more typical sizes that are available. But like I said, if you didn't want to go with some kind of a brick structure, and he gave me another rendition of this is what they're doing at the Leroy Library, there's also an option of just the metal, the metal posts, which would reduce the price because the, the brick piece would be five thousand. But really, at, at that kind of a price, if we were talking about putting one there, by all rights, we should, we should bid that because it exceeds the twenty thousand dollar threshold for bidding for over at the other site.
So these, these prices are, that was shit, they, they.
They're, they're estimates.
They're estimates, but you would have to go back and get it bid it to do that, right?
Right, to follow the, the New York State bidding laws.
If we went with the metal poles?
Well, well, no, if you want. Here, I think our, our other bid still holds because you're taking it and cutting it exactly in half. So if you were the low responsible bidder for two signs, cutting it in half, you're going to be the low responsible for one. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we'd have to rebid that because they're still the low bidder. But over here, it exceeds the twenty thousand dollar threshold, so we should rebid that if that is the decision to, that the board wants to go with a sign at that location.
Just a quick question.
Yep.
If we were to rebid, or if we were to bid that, would it make sense to try to get a better deal with this one? You know, thinking that if you got two instead of one, I mean, I don't know.
I would say Dennis, I don't think it's going to change the deal because this deal's based on two, even though we're only getting one. I mean, that is an option, you could go back out and.
If, if you were going to, I was going to ask basically the same question that says if you're going to rebid the one over here, would we open it up again and say we, just open the bid up again, say we want two signs, this time it includes, there's a little bit more manual type labor involved?
Yep, we could do that, that's.
Clearly an option.
So we wanted to share that. I'm not sure if there's any more questions for Greg.
One more. So if we had these signs, we probably could have had, saved the girls the, the pain of coming in two days after they've lost. I'm looking at that out there saying that they had a sectional game on Tuesday night, right? Because that could have been wiped right off and onto the next thing and.
And it can, it can still be changed manually some, but I mean, it's, it's a manual piece and, you know. Ron has been very clear when he was the building principal, he understands the labor that, you know, you take somebody out there every day, they walk out, they have to lift the face up, change the message on both sides and, you know. But yes, the answer to your question is yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Because I, I, I'd let the board know ahead of time so I didn't surprise anybody. I'm on board with the signs. And I know we're not voting on anything right now. I personally am weighing, having, hawing. I like here, I like at OE, like we discussed last week. Me personally, I'm prepared to wait. We've talked, our responsibility, I know we discussed getting signs. We didn't budget for it. And I think if we can figure out a way, when Greg's going through all these numbers and all these line items and budgeting for next year, to put it into our actual budget. This is what we're, this is just my opinion, me talking. That way, in my four years, I want to give zero people the ability to come at me and say, you didn't budget for it, you're frivolously spending money that was not allocated for this cause. And I think, okay, we have a rough estimate of what these are going to cost us. I would be more comfortable, and I, I can back the board's decision on whatever. But I would be more comfortable if we stepped back and said, look, this is exactly what we want to do. Let's get it in the budget. That way, next year, when we write the check, nobody in the public can come at us and say, why did you spend that money that you did not reserve for that specific thing? I guess that's, that's where I'm sitting now. I mean, again, I can support a decision against that. I'll stand with the board the way it is when we have to vote on this whenever it happens. But that's where I'm at right now.
If, if we don't have any other questions for Greg, let's let him go on to the capital project. And then we'll have our discussion when it comes to the signage. Have an opportunity to make motions at that point.
Okay, capital project update?
Yes, so as you were, we've been working, we've been working hard to try and wrap up the capital project. One of the big last pieces is the concession stand piece. We had a meeting and a change order was drawn up by our construction manager, sent to Welliver in the amount of fifty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars for the work they did out at the concession stand. It was very much our feeling that, they initially submitted time tickets totaling one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. And we made it very clear to them at the very beginning of the process that they were to submit the time tickets in a fashion that was allowing us to track the work, be it what was still their contract work, what was remediation work from their contract, and what was remediation work from the faulty workmanship. And they did not do that when we asked them specifically to do that. So at the end, we took the time tickets and we offered the opportunity to sit and be a part of that process or try to figure all that out. Once again, they declined. So then the construction manager at the time went through it, they went through it again recently, that's where the fifty-five thousand dollar number came up with. They felt that was a fair number based on their understanding of the tickets. I've gotten confirmation from the construction manager that Welliver rejected that change order and has not signed it. And they're in the process of writing a written response to us, I have not received that yet. But that's where the concession stand piece stands now. There's a few other odds and ends. Today, for the third time, we had the wrong door delivered for this conference room. You might have seen it on your way in, it's incredible, yeah. Yeah, it's gone now, but it came in and it swung the wrong way. And that's the third time that the door's been delivered. The other two times, the measurements were off for the hinges. This time, the measurements were right, but it swang the wrong way. It's just incredible.
Is that, who's that?
Holdsworth Klemowski is the general contractor. So this is all on their dime, but it's just delaying us from wrapping up their contract. But it's just frustrating that, and the doors come from Atlanta. And it's just, you know, when they try to track them, they know they've left Atlanta, but in this day and age of GPS, you'd think they know where the truck is and, oh, we know it left Atlanta about four days ago, we're not sure where it is. You know, but anyway.
So this is where it's wrong?
Yeah, I mean, it's functional the way it is now, but if you look at the hinges closely, Carla, they had to, the construction manager actually modified the wood to make it fit because it was cut wrong. So the hinge was here, the openings on the, the dents on the door were like this, so he actually had to extend that so that when you guys hit your first board meeting in this room, we had a door to be able to shut. So if you had executive session, you could conduct that in private.
This is kind of like the loner door.
Yeah, this is a loner door.
He was here earlier and we had, we had this man here doing a?
So it opens?
Yeah. And then they had the door sitting out there and I, the guy left it, just left it there.
Well, they probably checked it bad.
On a pallet, you know, propped up on the?
That's what that was.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is, I've seen that.
I came back from lunch and I thought something blew off the roof, I'm like, what is that? I thought it was a piece of the Challenger coming out of the sky.
Greg, what's your best guess on what we have left in the capital?
We have, I think, about eighty-five thousand dollars left, so, you know, when all is said and done.
After we pay Welliver or?
No, no, that's including what we still have to pay Welliver.
Okay.
So we're right down to the very end. So we're waiting for their written response. You know, we had met with them once before when Mr. Carl Lovati was here and that meeting did not go very well. They did not take, they felt their ownership of the whole concession stand piece was eight thousand dollars, which was pretty insulting, and they called it a hot dog stand.
Right. Which rubbed John the wrong way.
Well, it rubbed me the wrong way because after twenty minutes, I very politely said, you know, and all due respect, it might be a hot dog stand to you, but it's not a hot dog stand to this community. It's the face of this project. Every time somebody goes up to get a refreshment, every time they use the facilities, the bath, I mean, they've waited a long time. So you might think it's a hot dog stand, but we don't.
Should have told me you're paying hot dog prices then.
Yeah. So that's, you know, so that's the update on the capital project. So we're working hard to, you know, to get the last loose signs cleaned up, but it's just been a little frustrating. But we will keep you abreast of what their letter says and what the next steps will be. I'm sure Joe Shields will be involved. He's been guiding us a little bit through this, but I'm sure he'll get more involved now.
And Welliver is the only company that we are outstanding with, correct?
That's correct. We've received the first of the two payments from the architect. They had agreed to ninety thousand and they asked us to split it over two years, which we agreed to because it's really not a cash flow issue for us. We received that forty-five thousand dollar check, Dr. Kelvin got it a couple of weeks ago. We got the check from the Chase that they had agreed to. All that money's been deposited and we'll use that money to pay against our debt service on the project, so that was.
Do we owe Welliver money?
We owe them, there's one more payment application with a bunch of the last change orders that you guys approved about a month ago. We have not paid that one yet.
And how much was that, Greg?
I think it was a couple hundred thousand dollars, Carla, if I remember correctly.
So right now, we're holding the bag?
Mm-hmm.
The ball's in our court.
Yeah, yeah. But as you know, this negotiation is different because we negotiated with the other two parties and they agreed to pay us, I mean, there was no outstanding money. This one, they think they're due one-hundred-and-fifty-six, we think they're due much less than that, so it's, you know, just not giving them what they've, what they're requesting because we feel that it's not appropriate.
Should we not pay them what we think we owe them?
Well, that's what we tried to do, Matt, by issuing the change order, but they rejected it, so I'm not sure what I could, you know.
And you can't issue the check without a change order?
I don't think that would be what Joe Shields would recommend. So.
So what right do we have, like, if this company should come up again in another project?
Well, that's why I say it's always the lowest responsible bidder meeting specifications. So if we have good documentation, I think the board would have every right and the district would have every right if they were the low bidder to reject it. Now, they might fight that, but then if it went to court, as long as you have the appropriate documentation to document everything we've gone through, which is all included in all of our records through the construction manager, I think we'd have a pretty strong case to prove to them that, no, you didn't, you were not responsible on this job.
Didn't they realize, like, our meetings aren't televised or?
Mm-hmm. And they have a very good reputation. I mean, at the time, when they were the low bidder, we were pleased that someone with a good reputation was, had the best price, but in public works contracts, it's just...
And our whole basis with them is because they didn't protect the site properly?
They didn't protect the site properly, the mesh in the concrete was down under.
Okay, I just want to recap that in my head.
Yes, yeah, we didn't ask them for, you know, we paid for the additional, the additional drainage that was put in at the footers and the trench drain, I mean, that was all new, so we paid for that. So we only asked them to pay for what they were responsible for. And they did the work and got it all done on time, but they billed us for a lot more than what we feel is appropriate.
So let me understand, the one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand is what they feel they're due for the entire project or just the redo of the concession?
The redo of the concession stand. Their piece of the redo of the concession stand.
Okay, so we feel they're due about fifty-eight thousand, so almost like a third?
Yes, we issued them a change order proposal of fifty-eight.
Okay. And in turn, for other work that they've done, they're outstanding for how much?
I believe there's a couple hundred thousand dollars in change orders that you guys approved that they had to, they can't add them to their bill until they're approved change orders, so.
Okay, thank you.
So we will keep you all informed on how this continues to progress. The next chapter we'll bring back to you, basically. So the, and you all have copies of this in your packet?
I hope you have got some.
Give us the draft calendar for the budget piece, go ahead.
Okay, so I apologize for the viewing public if that is that small. Susan, we're making progress, so it's there.
It is there, I'm doing pretty good, thank you.
So what you have before you was a draft of the proposed two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget calendar. And pretty much it follows what we've done in the past few years. We'd like to start out the budget process at the next meeting by having a budget workshop. If you remember correctly, that was one of the changes we made last year under interim superintendent Carl Lovati to open it up for more input, more transparency. So we had that initial workshop meeting where we shared a lot of data with the board. And also, the superintendent was able to set the stage for the budget setting, things that were going to be factors in where the budget would end up. So we're planning that, I've been working with Dr. Kelvin on that piece for the next board meeting. And then the one big change from last year is, we're going to go back to, instead of presenting it all in March as one part, which was a change last year, the superintendent has directed me to, he would prefer to do it in the three-part format, which is what we did previously.
And just to add to that, so, you know, what I'd like to do is make sure that we have enough opportunity for public comment, for you to ask questions, for you to really feel like you're in support of what's happening with the budget. So we could always do it all at one time, right? But sometimes, that doesn't provide for the opportunity for the questions that you might want to ask. So that's why, I'm really used to doing it in three parts, so that gives a lot of feedback discussion. And then at the end, we present the full thing, basically. So that's, that's why I was, I'm suggesting we change it in that way. I just want to make sure that the public feels comfortable with what we're doing and they can give their feedback. And you can give your feedback as we move forward, so same timeline, but just done a little bit differently, basically.
And there's still opportunities built into this calendar that we provided last year, starting out with the budget workshop, also a budget survey that, we're planning on doing that again, as you know, we did that last year. I've already talked to Amy and we'll be pulling that out and sharing that with Dr. Kelvin to see, you know, how we want to structure those questions. We'll actually be sharing a draft with the board at the December meeting to get your input, and then we'll be sending the survey out and it'll be coming back. We've also got built into the calendar, Jeremy, a communications committee budget forum, January fourteenth, hopefully that was around the same timeline that we did it last year. So that date is, obviously you can, you know, that date's not in stone at this point because, you know, you're the chair of that, but looking at last year's calendar, it was right around the same timeline that we did it. And then in going over this prior to the meeting when we had agenda setting, the board president, vice president asked for a few more opportunities to be added for public comment, and we added those. Let's see, where did that? We added three pieces here for public comment. Is this the right one? Anyway, it should be on April seventh, should also be on March seventeenth, and I believe it was March third, although they're not on this copy that I have here, but we did add those and... Amy, are they on that one? Can you read that?
Yeah, I can see it. Public comment, March seventeenth, and public comment, April seventh.
Right, and then April, I think there's three opportunities where we added public comment. Culminating with the board adopting the budget on April seventh, and then the public vote, which is a statewide voting day. So just to reiterate, we've got a workshop built in there, we've got a community forum meeting, and we have three opportunities throughout the process where the calendar allows opportunity for public comment on what they're seeing with the budget.
So you're, I'm sorry, you're going to do the three pieces, the three?
Right, we would do the capital piece first, then the program piece second. So capital's in January, program is in February, Carla, and then the administrative and a total budget in the beginning of March, along with the first look at revenues, estimated revenues in March. Then you have the second March meeting where it's just budget review and public comment. And then, so there's a meeting between when you see it all, you have another meeting, and then we ask you to adopt the first meeting in April.
Yeah, I know, I looked through it, I just can't memorize it all. And then when is your meeting with the administrative staff to determine their needs?
We'll be doing that throughout the process, those meetings are built in. So actually, before we bring any recommendations to the board, the superintendent would review budget and things, including the budget administrative council.
The dates for that are set for December first, January fifth, January nineteenth, February twenty-third, March first, all those would be administrative meeting pieces for input.
Okay.
Board, any other questions about that? Are you okay? I'm good? All right, so with that said, thank you Greg, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Greg.
That's your pleasure, pleasure. Okay, that, that's the superintendent report tonight.
Under board business, we have information on the first reading of policies and Phil, I understand you're going to talk to some of these?
Well, I'm going to go with no, but then I'm, but then I'm going to talk. So I'm not going to talk, I'm not going to go over what we're changing, I'm sure everybody read those. What I will say about these is this, two of these, and I apologize, I don't know which ones, seventy-five thirteen, seventy-five twenty-one. Although we are going to do the first read on these tonight, after we got BOSI's recommendations to make the changes, we put the changes in, we put it in the agenda, swiftly thereafter, BOSI's sent yet another round of changes to the exact same policies. So we're going to do the reading on these tonight, you'll be basically acknowledging that you read them, and then we are going to make more changes to them for the second reading. So we are going to still leave them in the agenda, trusting that everyone has looked at them and read them, then we will make additional changes based on more BOSI's recommendations.
Well, they're not recommendations, they're mandates.
Well, we'll, leaving out the specifics.
So the question I have is, the final version we see will be all changes highlighted, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
It's your next round, you have all the highlighted changes in, yes.
All in the document.
Yes.
Thank you.
Phil, I had a question, I'm not part of policy, maybe Michelle can answer this. But I was concerned about the portion on the policy with the Narcan. Was that a decision that you, that the district made not to have the Narcan, or was that something that was suggested by Erie County BOSI's? I see it's crossed out as the substance abuse.
Right, do you want to handle that one?
I would need to look into that one, but I believe that?
Oh, we did.
There have been some.
Yeah, we talked about it, but we didn't provide it.
I think the recommendation with BOSI's was at the time, unless that was currently in effect, it needed to be omitted until?
Right, and it's not.
Because our district isn't currently doing it, it can't be in our policy until we are actually starting to do it. So that's why it's omitted at this time.
And it doesn't mean that you can't bring it back. So like, if we come to a point where we do want to do something like that, the committee can take that up again, look through it, see if they would like to make revisions and kind of go from there, basically. So we've got, each year, what you do is you go through your policies to see, you know, what's accurate from what is it, and if things are not, then pull it out and kind of make sure that it reflects actually what it is that you're doing.
Well, I just, with that policy, if it's changed or revisited, I'd like to know if the sheriff's department or the troopers?
New York State.
Have that in our area for that. Because if they do, then maybe we can avoid having to revisit that, but if they don't, we, I don't think.
The Lions Club, I had a presentation by Barry Bertsch and they do all the sheriff's card too, have them.
Okay.
So take care of it.
I will, I will also check with the police department and I can send you.
I don't know, I can't send up the state police, but I know the sheriffs.
Just so if anybody in the audience wonders what that is, that is the antidote for heroin overdose.
And also know that our physician, like our school physician, Dr. DeVor, is actually cautioning districts around that particular procedure. So here's the thing, you know, you got to be careful with giving out those kind of medications to students, because once you give something to a child, now you're liable for it. So you're trying to stop a child from having an overdose, you give this medication, and then something goes wrong, you're liable. So there's a lot of precaution with that, and if you're really not doing it, you want to be careful, you want to be careful. And whatever you have in your policies, by the way, what you're saying that you're doing, if you don't do that, right, then you're liable also. So right now, I would suggest that it be best to not be there, we're not doing it, and then as time goes along, we continue to move along in whatever it is that we're doing. But I will check on the Narcan piece and I'll let you know.
And that's why it was admitted, because we don't currently have it here in the building.
Well, I just finally got through it, I read it again, I read it again. Well, I just finally got through it, I read it again, I read it, and then I wanted to read it again, and I just had that question, so thank you.
It was on the news this morning, too.
Oh, was it?
This morning on Channel Eight this morning, so, yeah.
Any other questions on the first reading? If not, could I get an action to appoint our fire inspector? Can I get a motion to that, Carrie, a second? Matt, is there any discussion? All in favor? Next on our agenda is to approve the budget counter as outlined by Greg and Dr. Calvin. Can I get a motion to that, Dennis, a second? Carla, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, next is to approve the signage, and I imagine that this is going to...
Before we do that, you want to make sure we approve that we've done it.
Oh, okay, we have to go back and, and approve the first reading of the policies, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to approve, Dennis, a second? Phil, any discussion? All in favor? Next, I am sure that we will all have opinions on the signage. To, to start the discussion, can I get a motion to approve a single sign at the high school? So that we, Tim, do we have a second? Carla, discussion? Jeremy?
Everything I said about that.
Just copy it, read it again.
I just, I really, really thinking about it, and if, if we're talking approving one sign, we've had the discussion, we want to do both, so I don't know why we would approve just one tonight anyhow. Whether we decide to go forward with ASAP or wait, why are we going to approve one and not both at the same time? If we've said that's what our desire was.
We, we could approve one, we could approve two, we could approve none. I just started with one as a, as an opportunity for us to have a discussion, okay?
I go with Jeremy, that we should put it in the budget. I'd also like to see that we're on a Red Cross facility, correct?
Correct.
Is there any way we could get any funding from the federal government for a sign? I mean, just something to look at. You know, saying, hey, we're a Red Cross place, can we get a hundred thousand dollars per sign out in front?
Because there's such a wealth there.
Well, I mean, I don't know if there's any kind of grant or something we can apply, you know, I think it'd be a worthwhile thing to look at. Any, any free money is paid money.
Carla, I think you had your hand up.
I did, and, and the reason I like the idea of going with one sign at this point is because, now, don't anybody jump, is we don't know what we're doing over there. We have a long range plan that we need to talk about for the schools over there. And I think it would, if we did anything, I think the sign on the poles would be the most economical way because they could be moved should something happen down the line. But I'm not in favor of maybe a, you know, a permanent big structure there, so I, I would never be in favor of two signs exactly like this over there, or one bigger, one smaller, because of, I, I don't want to throw good money after something that may change entrances. We just don't know what that might look like five years from that, down the line. But I am in favor, we have talked about this for two years, it is labor intensive, part of our goals were to promote what's going on in the schools. I know there's been talk, people can't read it, they're driving too fast, whatever, but I did some driving around, and you can read that stuff as you come upon it. You can be pretty far away and read multiple trails, or whatever you call it, when they roll on through. There must be a, that award for it.
Scrolling.
Scrolling, that's it, Greg. And I, I know it's labor intensive to go out there, and like Tim said, the stuff that's up there is history, and there was, the board meeting for tonight wasn't even up there. That was something that could have been circumvented. I know it's not in the budget, and maybe going with one sign right now, wouldn't be the worst thing in the world that we did. Going for two, when we don't really know what's going on down there, may not be the best way to spend the money at this point. That's my opinion.
Tim, and then Matt?
Uh, just to review a little bit what we, we asked for, I mean, we got exactly what we asked for at the last meeting. We directed them last spring to give us signs for there and there. We held it off, it was going to be in June, we were looking at that. The funding part of it, we're talking about putting it into budget, we talked about budget, but we talked about, well, sometimes, you know, how much we'd have at the end of the year, whether we'd use that. It'd been used before, but maybe frivolously, but to get a sign there to, you know, applaud the accomplishments of our students, our administrators, when they get the awards, when they get a award school, the high school, the athletic stuff, the choir, the band stuff, everybody, all state, we're here, all the things, we're, one of our goals was to communicate all these celebrations of success. We, I think we need to do a better job doing that, that would help us do it. And we had talked about, and some of you weren't with us at that point yet, was there going to be any money left in the, in the project, which there ended up being not, but was there going to be, we've had money at the end of the year that we could use, and I thought that was the funding part that we had talked about, not, I mean, so technically was talked about as how we were going to budget for it then. So, and the reason we didn't do anything in June was because we heard that there was going to be a newer technology, so we didn't move along with that. But, you know, I think it's something we've been talking about for two years, it's time to get started, whether we get one, just to start here, because there's a lot of messages go here, every building's going to have different messages they want to put on, or different accomplishments that they'd want to recognize, that I think would be good to do that, and then we do, I didn't know if it was last time when we're getting the, the worries about the future for the money from Gannay and all that stuff, whether that got people thinking, well, maybe we shouldn't get only one sign or whatever, and now go over there. But, you know, we got the bids out there, you know, we got the price, that it's a better sign, but I would like to see it, at least get one thing done, because we've been talking about it for a couple of years, and I think the money that we had at the end of the year moved to the general fund, so technically it is still the same, same money that's there, that we talked about using at the end of the year. Does anything rolled over into this year's general fund, correct?
Matt?
Thank you.
What was the half cost, what was the price of?
Thirty-five, thirty-five, nine seventy-five.
I think at this point, we need to focus on where we are now, and we've talked about two signs, we've talked about the different locations, we're a community now, and five years down the road, we just don't know, and stressing about something that we just don't know is not going to get us anywhere. I'd be comfortable with the recommendation that was earlier, maybe rebidding for two signs, seeing where we get for both the OPOE location and the high school, and then just making a decision once we have the full picture information from the lowest, lowest responsible bidder, and then just making a decision from there. I think right now, there's just too many different pieces, and no matter what decision we're going to do, somebody's going to be unhappy, but it's our job to do what's best for our children and our community, and if this is a way to get our community more involved, then we need to do it.
Phil?
I just want to clarify, I'm, I'm, are you saying you just want to do it so you want to act on it sooner than later, or are you saying, wait, I'm, I'm...
I think it's in our, I, I agree with kind of what Tim said, I mean, from what I've heard, there's been a lot of discussion for a couple of years, and this can go on for a couple more years, just because things change all the time. I'd be more comfortable getting a bid for now, whether we have to wait till springtime because if the ground freezes and they can't dig, I would just like to get for both locations, my recommendation would be for both locations, the OPOE entrance and the high school entrance, a bid for, you know, extend the bid out again for the cost of both signs, and then see what happens for there. But I, I don't think tabling it, because if we're going to table, something else is going to come up, and something else is going to come up, and that would be this is my take.
Jeremy?
Okay, I'm following, and I, if it's not done before winter time, we're looking for late spring. When's the budget pass? May, correct? If we wait till May, we'll have the money there, set aside, earmarked, this is what we're going to do with it. We're not talking waiting another year, we're talking about waiting until we told the public what we plan to do with the money, because in the past, the criticism is, you bought things and spent money that you didn't tell us what you were going to buy things and spend the money on. That's my only rea, again, I'm all about, I'll vote for whatever this is, seventy thousand something, if that's what the bid comes out to put a sign here and there, because I think that's where they belong, but I won't do it until we say to our public, this is the money we're asking you for, and this is what we're going to do with the money. And again, I'm part of a board of nine, so when, you know what my hand is going to do, and when it's going to do it, I will support what happens here. I just want the public to know, that's where I, that's where I stand on.
Phil?
Yeah, you know, I, I have been as interested in doing this as anybody, and I had just noted this down, Jeremy just stole my thunder, it is, I don't have any doubt that we can afford the signs, one of them, two of them, or a dozen of them. There's no doubt that we have the money, and we all understand what our future looks like, that, what I'm more concerned with isn't do we have the money? My concern is, my first year on this board, we were coming out of a haze of criticism that we were not, that the district was improperly spending money, and that they were spending money on things that were not in the budget. So although I want the sign yesterday, I think, based on some of the criticism that came from people sitting on this board, that we should do it the right way, and believe me, I don't want to do it the right way, I don't want to wait, but I think, based on what got us where we are, the right thing to do is to put this in the budget, and I'm all for putting two signs up, in fact, I want two signs, but I, I think we owe it to the community, and based on some of the things that this board has said, that we should do it the right way and put it in the budget. And by the way, I don't like that, I don't like that option, but I think that's the right thing to do.
Greg, I think you wanted to interject.
Well, just, you know, an idea, we still have one point three million dollars in our capital fund. We can no longer add money to that fund because it's maxed out, but we do have the right to spend that money based on what the voters allowed us to put it into the capital reserve for, which was...
Improvement.
Improvements to the buildings. And an option that you guys could consider, and we did it a few years ago with the OP playground, was we put it on the budget as a proposition to purchase the playground for OP. It was, we had the budget, we had the bus reserve piece, and then the second proposition was for the OP pregon, and then if the voters approve that, the money comes out of the capital fund, so it doesn't, you know, it takes the Gannay piece out of the equation. That money that's sitting in the capital fund is only for capital purposes. It's just an option that you guys could consider if you want to, you know, if the direction is to go with two signs, you know, you could, we could develop that concept, it could be added in, talked about during the budget process, and could be included in the regular budget, but me, if you want to take the Gannay piece out of it, it could be listed as a proposition to come out of the capital reserve money that, that we have sitting there at one point three million dollars.
I like that idea.
Just, just a thought.
The other thing I was going to mention, I'm sorry.
Matt, go ahead.
The other thing was, putting a sign on Ridge Road is understandably, I don't, I don't know that, we know the future of what's going to happen over there anymore than we know the future's going to happen over here, because if someone gets a wild hair and starts driving a bulldozer through this place and building seventeen school districts, seventeen schools on our property, that entrance and that sign could just as easily be moved as anything on Ridge Road. So I would say, I understand your point, and it's a good point, but I would also make a counterpoint that says, if you apply that rationale to Ridge Road, I think that same rationale would be applied over on this site as, as well. Everything could get moved.
Another thing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
To piggyback on that, too, we're not talking about something that can't go someplace else. We own the technology, so something happens where this one needs to go, or that one, they can be moved to where they've got, I mean, it's not a...
But the, if we built the brick...
No, I understand that.
You know, whereas the poles, and I'm sure if you put it on the poles, you could then probably take the sign and put it in a permanent structure, but I'm not in favor of building a permanent structure to house the sign at this point.
Every, every board member but me, I think, has had an opportunity to voice their opinion. I understand where Jeremy and Phil are coming from, in the sense that there were some expenditures that caused criticism in the district. However, I think we as a board made it perfectly clear back in the spring that we were interested in, in signage, and at that point, we were thinking that we would be able to take it out of the capital project or money that was left over at the end of the year. We did not do that because we waited, thinking that there was new technology coming, and we wanted to buy the latest technology when we built the sign. For the last two years, we have had a goal in this district of recognizing academic achievement, of publicizing our achievement. I'm telling you, as a former building principal, it's impossible to do that with that sign. It is just too labor intensive. You can't go out there every day and change that. You can't put A P scholars on that sign. You can't put the forty kids who are going to be inducted into the National Honor Society on that sign. You can't put the two kids from, three kids from Wayne Central, who last week finished in the top ten in the Wayne Finger Lakes Cross Country meet. You can't put their names on that sign. You can't put AJ's name on that sign, since she's the leading point getter in section five soccer, you can't recognize her. We can't recognize the young man who received a hundred on the math regions grade as a seventh grader taking a ninth grade exam. If we have a goal of recognizing academic achievement, let's act on it tonight, let's get a sign that allows us to do that. We can still, we can still decide to go ahead and bid for additional signs for next year and put it in the budget, but I am in favor of acting on our goal and supporting our goal with our funds. Does anybody else wish to say anything at this point? If not, then I would move, all in favor of, of accepting a bid for one sign in front of a high school, please signify by raising your hands. Opposed? I believe it was carried by five-three. Thank you.
Consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Carrie, a second? Matt? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Committee records, communications, Jeremy?
We had a meeting tonight, we have set our, a permanent date for a community conversation on February twenty-fifth at six-thirty, I know it's a long way out, but the topic will be state testing. Greg informed us, so the next, next meeting that we have will be December tenth, before our board meeting at five-thirty. We'll probably agree to set that date of the fourteenth, just so you can have it in your schedule. And then, Mathis, can I say what we were talking about? The plan will be to, Mathis, to roll out his...
Entry plan.
Entry plan to our neck, our December board meeting. So what we would like to see happen is our board business get shrunk, so we can end the meeting a little bit early, Mathis can roll out his plan, and then we can involve the community as a conversation. People could ask and speak to Mathis about what he's found and what he's thinking and where we're headed. And lastly, I will be, I will be penning a letter to our governor with, that will be edited by the rest of the committee.
I wouldn't want to be him.
In regard to the twenty-five million dollars they just gave Craft Food to keep a plant open in New York, while we get nothing to keep our seven hundred employees at the end of three fifty. So I would like to ask for a little support to keep our budget the way it is, our town's budget, and keep the people who work here, here. So, and I'll do my best to make it professional, but that's where my team of editors will be.
Good, very good.
Audit you said for amusing, entertainment.
Audit committee, right?
We have a meeting one week from tonight, right here in this room, five-thirty PM. Highlights will be receiving our external audit from Ray Wagler, and corrective action plans for our internal risk assessment and our single... and corrective action plans for our internal risk assessment and our, uh, single audit food service.
Anything else? Policy committee, Phil?
Uh, I would ask all the board members to read policy, get your pens out. Thirty-two eighty. Uh, I'm gonna ask you to read that in preparation for the next meeting. Uh, the district is going to review some issues revolving around that, and they wanna make sure that we're prepared for it. And that's it, next meeting is December tenth at five PM.
Phil, can you just give me an idea of what thirty-two eighty is?
Uh...
No?
Sure, yeah, you wanna...
Sure, so it really involves, uh, looking at outside groups coming in and using the, uh, the facilities. So it really kinda will, uh, look at it first, and then we'll, we'll talk more about it. But it's, it's really about facility usage and groups, and, and making sure that we have the proper balance for all groups who are interested, basically.
Under Board President comments, I have a few items. Um, I also had the privilege of attending part of Grandparents' Day at, uh, OP. Uh, I, I forgot the exact count, you had it in...
Seven hundred and fifty-six parents.
Uh, grandparents and significant others were there. I don't know when or if, Bob, if you started that tradition or not, but, uh... I, I remember driving up here from Pennsylvania, when we lived in Pennsylvania, to go to Grandparents' Day, and it was pretty telling when Pam Petrow asked how many, uh, grandparents came from more than fifty miles to see the number of hands that went up, which, uh, tell you how important it is to the kids. And so, my compliments to Pam and, and to all the people at the, uh, OP for, and, and all the volunteers who were there for continuing that tradition, that's the kind of publicity that you just can't buy as, as a school district. And then also, I would like to compliment, uh, three of our coaches. Three of our coaches have been named Coach of the Year for the Wayne Finger Lakes East, um, athletic group. Bill Jordan was named for girls soccer, Tim Metal was named for boys soccer, and Gisela Buesel, and I, am I saying that correctly?
Gisela.
Buesel?
Gisela. Gisela.
Okay, uh, for girls volleyball. And, and it's nice, I, I, we've, we heard earlier about the recognition that, that our football coach receives through the DNC, and it's nice to see our coaches, uh, getting soccer, or getting, uh, recognition. And while the girls soccer team didn't have the same outcome that we would all have liked, I reminded my granddaughter that of all the teams in Class A in the state of New York, all but one goes home with a loss. And I think they had, I think their season record was eighteen and two, which, uh, um, but there were so simi, so many similarities to when the last time Wayne won a sectional soccer game in girls soccer, it was nineteen ninety, we were playing Brighton, and, um, I was also at that game, so that says something. The other thing I would like to do is, I would like to compliment the board for its commitment to, uh, to, to its own development in terms of it, its training. For those of you who are in the audience that do not know, a week ago today, we were here from five o'clock till nine o'clock, um, working on our own skills as a, as a board. And we have a workshop coming up on a Saturday for auditing, uh, as a board. Uh, the reason for doing that is that there's research that says that the better a board performs, the more it impacts effectively the academic instruction in the school. So I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly compliment the board for its commitment to education and, um, uh, for willing to do that. I would also suspect that, uh, in the future, that we will want to have a discussion about signage as the superintendent prepares a budget for next year. And so I would suggest that we maybe want that to be on an agenda sometime in December. And then lastly, I had a note here, uh, to talk about Fitzgerald and, and Gannay. Um, I saw in the paper this week where, uh, the company that owns Fitzgerald, Fitzpatrick Nuclear Power Plant in Oswego, I said it's going to close, and I saw the reaction of, of Governor Cuomo and the reaction of Senator Schumer as well. So I would suggest, Jeremy, that you might wanna include Schumer in your, uh, letter as well. And that, uh, as a board, that we start to become active in contacting, uh, these politicians regarding, um, the closing of nuclear power plants. I found it very interesting that Cuomo wants to close Indian Point, but wants to keep Fitzpatrick open.
Yeah, Indian Point's where they need the power too.
Yeah, Indian Point is down near New York City, where they really need the power. Where Gannay could sell all the power it had if they could only get it down there. So Jeremy, if you would, as part of the communications committee?
And we'll, I'll keep it, everybody on the board, when the, when the draft comes.
Okay. That's all I have, we do have a need for, uh, an additional executive session to discuss, uh, a staff matter. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? Kerry, Dennis, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome to stay, but we are not going to be conducting any more business when we come back out of the executive session.